Kathy, how many do we, do we need one more for a forum?
We do.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll just hang out until in case someone pops in, so. Kathy, you did not get the memo that it is the warm tones today.
It's cranberry.
Well, Susan and I clearly are the warm tones. You're in the cools.
Yes, Karen and Dawn Marie and I all ironically wore almost identical outfits today.
Did you get any correspondence from, from Chris or Brad if they were not going to make it?
I did not hear from Chris, but Brad came by and picked up his packet. So I'm assuming. And even Joanne, I thought was going to try to attend, but may not necessarily be able to fully participate.
Right.
Might be, she might be a little bit mute.
Yeah. Which I don't know what the parameters are for her. I guess she could vote technically, maybe through raising her hand if she can't vote.
I don't know what we're going to really necessarily be voting on other than to today, you never know, but.
Right. So.
I think if there is some vote, we can, if she can show herself and somehow indicate, you can verbally say that you know you identified her as.
Okay.
But we have a lot of people in the audience to promote during different agenda items. So everyone's here. We just need one more cleaning board member.
Do you see that?
You want, I can try and do some phone calling.
I'm texting Brad right now.
Awesome. Perfect.
Did you check downstairs and see if he actually is in person down there?
Um, I can, I just checked a little bit earlier, but I don't think he would be in person. But the, I believe Ben's down there and, and if anybody was actually there, they could, he could set them up. I mean, yeah, he asked me if I wanted to be down in the basement. I said, not just as soon as I have you.
Ben is listening. Can you double check and see if Brad is in the room?
Um, he is not.
Thank you.
Took care of that.
Very embodied voice.
Ran out there.
Brad is coming. I just got a response. So. My apologies to all the other, the viewers and the attendees for the delayed start. Our cast is not complete yet.
For everyone here, just so you know, you can open your chat box and you can use that for any technical issues that you might have throughout it and I can talk to you.
Correct. Any board members do not use that for corresponding between each other. Otherwise it's a violation of open meeting law that you do not have a forum to look at the discussion. So.
Strictly text.
It is strictly for text support only. Thank you.
Oh, there's Joanne.
There is Joanne. We're in a wait for Brad though, just to make sure that we have full participation. Did Brad indicate he's having any difficulty getting on Liz? No, he said that he said, give me a moment. He's just signing off on another meeting. So I don't know if that meeting is in person or on Zoom.
Let me just promote him. There he is.
Fantastic. Thanks for joining us, Brad. If you need a moment, let me know.
I'm sorry for the delay.
No, don't apologize. So thank you. Okay. I think, um, are we, oh, and we've already started recording. Is that correct? Are we good, Kathy?
Uh, it's for Ben.
Uh, yeah, we're on. I just do this Zoom recordings as a backup. So I started a little bit early, but you are now live.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. So welcome everyone to the January 19, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. I am Liz Hartsgrove, the Vice Chair of the Planning Board, and tonight I will be overseeing the role of the Chair. I will begin by taking roll call for a quorum and all votes will be by roll call. So Brad Goodwin.
Present.
Chris Vincent, I do not see Susan Britta.
Wasn't.
Will Rubenstein.
Present.
Joanne Crowley.
Present.
And Liz Hartsgrove, I am present. Perfect. We do have a quorum as allowed by Mass on Law Chapter 30A, Section 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. An act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergencies signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting today at Wednesday, January 19th, 2022 at 5:30 via remote or actually 5:40 tonight. Via remote access provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town's website, which can be accessed at www.yarmouth.us under the Agendas and Minutes tab by selecting Planning Board. For remote participation, public participation, which I do see, we do have some members attending. There is going to be a comment for you through the discretion of the Chair, which is I, and the Chair will invite the audience to comment. You can use your raise hand button that is down below. If no one is familiar with that, it is down below in the middle of your screen through Zoom. And you can notify me through that way, or you can dial in. Audience members should press star nine on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for public record. That part is very important because that goes into the minutes and then we know who we're talking to. So with that, we will start with the agenda and the first item for discussion on potential zoning amendments. One A is temporary seasonal employee housing. Kathy.
Yes, Frank Fredrickson is here. I know the last time when we had our, our meeting, everyone was interested in hearing from Chief Fredrickson and also Jamie Viera, Jack Kynes and Mary Vilbon are also here, who are the proponents of this amendment. I'd be happy to promote them to panelists so that they can speak freely if that's what you'd like.
Yes, please. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chief. Hi, Frank.
Hey, all my friends are here tonight.
So we had, um, at our last meeting, we had a proposal or discussion on temporary seasonal employee housing and a draft of proposed changes to zoning. I understand that you have looked it over and you have some comments and since I know you're in a time crunch, uh, please let us know, fill us in on what the discussion and review is, please.
Well, first of all, I certainly understand the need to have some housing for businesses in town because it's vital that they, they get the help to keep our economy going, to keep Yarmouth a real good spot for people to come and play and visit and to live. So without seasoned employees, it's, it's a problem. This isn't the 1970s when we had, you know, half of South Boston and Dorchester coming down and living in a cottage with, you know, God knows how many for the summer. Uh, it's hard to do that now. So, and those days are not coming back. So the theory behind using some of the hotel space to house some people makes some sense. But having lived through some of the problems in hotels we've had over the years. We want to make sure it doesn't get out of control. That's my job as chief to make sure we look out for the, the betterment of the whole community, not just a small portion. So I, I saw the first draft that you put out. I made some recommendations. Mary Milbron and Jamie Viera, we had a, a meeting on, on Zoom a couple of days ago. Uh, they put some changes in there. They, they, they look pretty good. Uh, and I, I, I can support that, but really anytime we open up the housing, we want to make sure it's for what your intended purpose is. Uh, we don't want to see our hotels turn into, um, uh, year round living spaces that we can't control because that was not, I am telling you, that was not a good scene for the town of Yarmouth. Uh, we made corrections. Uh, we worked with the, the owners and they've done a lot to move forward. And, and make things better. So that was my big concern to make sure I'm protecting the people beyond it, that it doesn't get out of control. Couple of adjustments were made. I can fully support the proposal we have. The people that have had opportunity to, to look at it. Um, I think it's reasonable and, uh, you know, if it doesn't work, you know, we can, we can change it next year.
Thank you. Um, while we have the chief here, uh, does any of the board members actually have any questions for the chief? Susan.
Cause I just want to double check. The, the second draft is dated January 7th. Is that the draft that incorporated the chief's comments as well as Mary's reply to his comments? Is that the draft we're working off of? I just want to make sure I've got the latest draft.
I believe so. It's draft two Kathy, if I'm wrong.
Yes, that's the draft. That's the draft I received from Jamie and Mary. Yep.
Okay. And there's nothing in here. Uh, there had been one recommendation about, some sort of sunset provision. Has that, and according to the first round, there was a comment that we can review that and, and discuss that a little bit further. I don't see that in the second draft, so I assume that's still something under discussion. Is that your understanding?
Kathy, would you like to answer that?
I didn't think that the sunset clause was necessarily something you guys were confirmed. Definitely you were looking to have. I know that Jamie had some reservations about it. But I think if the board decides that that's something that you want, then we'd have to take a look at how we could word that and include it in a future draft and also have that run by town council.
Okay. Cause, cause the, in one set of comments, I noticed that the, the chief did endorse or at least supported some sort of reset button or sunset provision or something like that. So at, at least according to my notes, that's really the only thing that's still outstanding. I think everything else has been, we sort of checked off the agree box. We added the time share. We cleaned up some of the definitional language. We are using seasonal employee. Uh, so I think all of these sort of editorial comments we're taking care of. This is the last big policy piece. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as everyone. Is that your understanding, Kathy?
It's up to you guys. Is that, whether that's something that you guys would like me to take a look at, like I said, and talk to town council about. I don't know if Jamie had any comments he wanted to provide on that. But that's certainly something that we could look at, at incorporating.
Okay. And I assume, could I ask a question directly of the chief?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, chief, you still, are you still endorsing or supporting some sort of, whether it's a sunset provision or some language that would allow the policymakers to go back in after a certain period of time and make any adjustments that are necessary? Is that still something you would support?
Not as concerned about that, uh, given the fact that this has got to go to town meeting. It gets voted on. And, and if it doesn't work, it can come before the town meeting next year, uh, if it has to. I think with the changes that were made, I, I think it's satisfactory for the good of everybody. I, I did want to do a little bit more comment on some of the other concerns. When you're going to have a, a young group of people coming to a hotel to live for the summer. They're humans. They're going to be spending, uh, off time doing what young people do. And we've had some of those issues before. And it's, it's the onus is on the hotel owners that take advantage of this to make sure they don't, uh, get out of control. I know one of the operations of West Yarmouth, we, we did hire detail officers to, uh, because it was getting, uh, a little too much late at night when people were coming home from work and the, the, the work is, uh, you know, well deserved time off and they, they enjoy each other. And we want to be careful of overcrowding the rooms as well, you know, you know, relatives, et cetera, coming down for the weekend and those types of things. But the onus is on the, uh, the people taking advantage just to make sure it runs properly. We're willing to help out and do whatever we can to, to make it go as smooth as possible and address problems as they come up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Brad, do you have any questions while we have the chief for about 10 more minutes or five more minutes?
Very grateful, uh, chief for coming forward. I, I was one of the ones who raised my hand and said, I'd like to hear from you. I remember that property next to Dave Darling's place that was eventually torn down and that had nothing to do with hotel motel, people staying, uh, employees. I just remember the cacophony of noise coming from your staff, your team, and then town, town citizens saying this hotel is out of control. The nice thing about this bylaw is the hotel owner does not have to take advantage of this. And he or she is going to make a business to business agreement with the restaurant owner or the whatever owner. And I think it'll work out well. It'll be good. It'll be a good first step. So I'm grateful that everybody's coming to the middle. To wrap it up, it reminds me what we all did at Captain Parker's. Uh, Jerry Manning pulled me aside a number of years ago and he said, I really want to thank the planning board for allowing me to build by deck. And I said, Jerry, we had very little to do with it. And then he, he commented on how great Karen Green was, how great Bruce Murphy was, and everybody gave a little bit to make something work. And I think that's what we're doing here tonight. So thank you very much for you all being here.
Thank you, Brad. Um, Will, did you have any comments while we have the chief?
Hi, chief. Um, thanks for being here and it was nice to read your comments. I think it's a Susan's point earlier, what I also noticed is in the memo that we got back is that the building commissioner still has to give an annual permit for the use. So Susan, I think there's still, there is something even built into the, to what we're doing here, even if we don't formally have a sunset. It has to come up for renewal. I mean, that's something just to keep in mind. I don't know if that's better or worse, but it is something that, I don't know. I, maybe as I'm getting older, I'm trying to not use town meeting as like a way to make policy on a year to year basis. So that's why I'm just a little more hesitant to kind of say, well, we can always go back to town meeting as opposed to if this goes through town meeting and, and, but we still have some power sort of pushed down through the, division ranks, you know, like, like for Mark, then maybe we can still get what we want and, and have a process that doesn't involve having to go back to town meeting on a regular basis. Does that make more sense? Susan?
I think the permitting, allowing Mark to issue an annual permit is fine. That's, that dictates the onesies and twosies, but the overall ability to go back and not necessarily do away with the policy, make changes. I agree with Will. I mean, I, I hate to keep, I agree with him pushing it back on town meeting all the time when you have so few people show up uh, and vote on behalf of the town. And that's sort of a, that's a voting problem as opposed to an issue problem, but, yeah, I mean, it is, yes, he can withhold the permit. Maybe they can appeal it. I, I don't know if they have any appeal rights in that regard. I'm not, I'm really not concerned that there's going to be that many problems. My major concern is as planners and as sort of mini policymakers. Again, putting something in place that's a, that's a change, a fairly significant change in my mind, without giving anyone the ability other than quote town meeting to go back and make any amendments that might be necessary or beneficial, um, I think is kind of short sighted. Um, I, I think that, we should have the ability to, along with the hotel and motel community to go back and make whatever necessary changes would be, would be required or, or maybe the police chief at this time next year is going to come back and say, this was a terrible idea. It didn't work out. And we have no ability other than town meeting, uh, to sort of make changes. I think it's sort of a balance of sort of the roles we're playing and what we're supposed to be doing.
Susan, it's possible that maybe if Kathy talks to town council, that there might be some language that we could have that would give us a little more wiggle room.
Well, Kathy, could you go over one more time? Why is sort of a sunset provision incorporated in the short-term rentals? And it would be problematic in this. I, there was an explanation. I didn't quite get it the first.
I'm not a hundred percent sure it would really be problematic. I just think it's a case of, if you want to, there's a lot of checks and balances that are in place under this particular bylaw, again, with the annual permit. But Mark, he's comfortable, you know, saying, no, I'm not going to issue this permit because you've been in violation of the zoning bylaw last year when you had your permit.
Can they appeal that decision?
They can appeal that plan, the building commissioner's decision to the ZBA and they can either uphold it or, or overturn it. So there is an appeal process, uh, in the, in that place. So, so this was more of a case of, the, the case with the short-term rentals was this is something where I think we're trying to move forward fairly quickly with something that might be considered a little bit more substantial. In order to be sure that we are continuing to have the excise tax, uh, for the summer for our short-term rentals. So having the sunset clause might be, in that particular case, might be something that makes people feel more comfortable voting for it at town meeting. Because we haven't had a significantly long period of time to talk about this with the, with the public, uh, understanding that, okay, we, we're going to take the next two years or so in order to really have a little bit deeper conversation and also get more, get more data. I mean, we've put some provisions in there and see how, um, people are adhering to them, how we're enforcing them and whether we need to make, make any amendments. But even then, we're still going to have to go back, you know, you'll have a sunset clause. If we don't go back to town meeting to do something, then that use goes away. And we're not necessarily sure we want that used to go away. Um, so it's, I'm not saying that you couldn't do it with the seasonal employee. I haven't talked to town council, um, about it. Jamie seemed to be concerned about whether there was a, a legal issue, why we couldn't do it. I would write it a little bit differently if that's something that you guys were interested in having in there. I do think that there's a lot of checks and balances already in the seasonal that aren't necessarily in the short-term.
Madam Chair, um, otherwise those are, that was the only question and or comment I wanted. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Um, Kathy, what is our timeline for submitting these recommendations or holding the public hearings for the town meeting submissions?
Excellent question. Um, we've already submitted to as a kind of a placeholder, um, two to four zoning amendments. I didn't really know how many we would have. Which needs to be done by the 25th of January. So we've submitted those, but we really need to decide in sometime, uh, in February, no later than our second meeting, what we want to do, because we're going to need to have that hearing, public hearing, probably our second meeting in March, so that we can have all of that information and the results to go before the, uh, Board of Selectmen, before they close the warrant at the end of March.
Okay. So public hearing scheduled in March, but our deadline to secure whatever we're going to be advertising for the public hearing would be last meeting in February. So we still have two, possibly three meetings before that finalization. And that would give you plenty of time to have that discussion with council on the sunset clause to bring it back to us for review. And or what options there are, whether it be that sunset. and/or what options there are, whether it be that sunset clause or staff recommending that there is some type of, um, process in place for reviewing the permits through the recommendation or review from the police and the building commissioner, or some type of system in place that doesn't require town meeting. So we can see what the positives and negatives for both options that we would evaluate. So then we can make that decision um, and base it also, and then the public can have that information as well to review and as well as any representatives that we have here. Uh, chief, does that sound suitable to you? It's bringing this back for a little bit more further discussion on the options for you?
That's fine with me. Um, I, you know, whatever you, uh, want to do is fine, like concerns have been met. Um, so, and, uh, so whatever you want, uh, you know, maybe there's some language you can put in there that, that building commissioner can suspend a little easier right in this, uh, piece as you're going on. I, I don't know. But, uh, listen, I hate to do it, but I have to run to the finance committee. If I don't go, I get no money.
Exactly. No, thank you so much for your time. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Frank.
Bye.
Um, so I don't know if the board is okay with that, or at least having, um, before we go and pull the public into comment, but just think about it. I'm gonna, um, actually turn it over to Mr. Viera. Um, I know that he has been working diligently with Mary and, um, Jamie, thank you for tuning in. Um, I don't know if you're fully remote down south or back home, so thank you.
No, I made it back. I'm back home.
Good, excellent. So would you like to, uh, talk about this a little bit?
Sure, I'm sure the board members had the opportunity to review the three changes we incorporated from the chief's suggestions to eliminate timeshare units, require the employees or staff to be 18 years or older, and at his suggestion, altering the word principally and changing it to seasonally, couple pieces of information. From our experience, we found that your average J1 worker who was in Yarmouth was in the low to mid twenties. So we're not talking teenagers, but 18 years and older is a, is a, um, is a good, I think, um, measure to have involved here. And, uh, so we incorporated that and we fully support that. I'll just pivot onto the sunset provision here and why, again, I'm not going to give you advice. If you want to get town council's opinion, you're certainly free to do that. Where I find this one has inherent review is unlike where you change the setbacks from 20 feet to 30 feet or lot coverage for a certain percentage, and it may take years to figure out whether or not it works. You're going to know next fall whether or not something like this is inherently problematic or needs to be fixed. And I would suggest that this board put an agenda item out sometime in the fall to hear back from us as the proponent, hotel operators that you invite to the meeting, the chief of police, and you gather some information to see what, if anything, needs to be changed. What I don't like about sunset clauses in that regard is, is then let's assume that this is working great and you put a two-year limit on it and it's set to expire on a certain date. And then you have a town meeting and you don't get a quorum. And guess what happens? Now this good idea that you have is now just poof, vanished. So if it doesn't work.
Zero for quorum, sir. We don't have a quorum in Towne Yarmouth, just so you know.
Okay, well, then you put it in the hands of four people who decide whether or not to keep it. So the, the fact of the matter is, and I understand, and if you want to get an opinion, that's great. Um, I just don't like the idea of it a proponent having to put something together and get it passed at town meeting twice. So if it doesn't work, you fix it. I'm happy to come back in the fall with the, um, chamber. And we could invite the chief and the building inspector, and then you folks can gather intel to see just how this worked or didn't work, and whether or not it needs to be changed in some way, shape, or form. But I'm looking forward to hopefully getting this moved forward. And as I said before, a, a, an option to help solve a problem. So, um, Liz, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, Mary, would you, I'm actually, hold on just a second, pause, put a pin right in there. Joanne, my apologies, did you have any uh, comments that you wanted or questions? I know that you're limited in capacity for participation.
Are you, you should be happy I can't talk too much.
I didn't want you feeling left out. So did you have any questions?
I, I, I didn't, I, it's fun to be a listener.
Okay, thank you. I didn't forget about you, so thank you. Um, Mary, would you, uh, do you have any further comments or, um, anything to add to it?
No, I don't want to repeat anything that was already said. Um, I think our conversation with the chief was very helpful. Um, I want to thank him very much for participating in this conversation. I think it's helpful for all of the committee members. I did also want to follow up with each of you at the last meeting. You had asked us to reach out to the other chambers across the Cape to see if any of them actually have a similar situation like this in their communities. The three that I were able to talk to that said that they were doing something with housing, I think you're very familiar with, which is Dennis and Harwich, but their situation is that their business owners are actually purchasing older hotels and making that their housing. And then in Province Town, it's actually the town of Province Town that purchased the building. Uh, no other communities has a, uh, an existing bylaw like Yarmouth. So there really is no other community that has something to compare it to. So I did want you to know that I did follow through and do that as well.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you. Uh, Jack, do you have any, um, anything to add?
No, I think everything has been covered.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, I do not see any public comment or anything on this, so.
No hands are raised. Oh, oh, there it goes. You said it too fast.
Oh.
Hand raised.
Okay, we're going to bring in Nick.
You want me to bring, promote him or just allow him to talk?
Allow him to talk would be great. Thank you.
All right.
Hi, Nick. You have the floor.
Yes, good evening, and thank you, everybody. Uh, wonderful job and thanks for your participation. I know you rather be other places, but you're wonderful volunteers and we all appreciate that. So, thank you very much. Uh, I just want to say, this is a uh, a short-term fix, and I really think the planning board and plan director should be thinking about a long-term, what we can do and how we get there. So I think the discussion that we all have is terrific. And maybe we could, uh, keep it going, uh, to actually rectify a problem because as far as I've been in Yarmouth, we've been a very tourist kind of community. And it's not going to change. I don't believe so. So we're still going to have this problem, and I think this is a great start. And we should continue working on a, a real solution. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I didn't mean to call you Nick. I'm sorry. It's Mr. Nick in the hill. So, but, um, so thank you. Thank you for those comments and definitely, um, we are hearing that. So, um, is there any other comments on this before or the board have any additional comments on this?
Can I just ask a question? Um, I guess I kind of, i- in the conversation would generally agree with Jamie with regard to the sunset clause. Um, but if you guys are interested in having me see what can be done, uh, with town council, uh, I'd be happy to do that. Maybe Jamie might have some ideas as well as how that might be done. I'm envisioning it. I mean, we want to continue to allow what we have on the books right now, correct? Which is that the motels can just still do it with their employees, because people are taking advantage of that. So this would be like a, something separate, which would be a sunset clause for expanding it to, uh, other people's employees. Is that true?
Susan, you have actually, you have the strongest voice on this one, so.
Oh, oh, I would say get the, talk to the council anyway, because I do think this question will come up at some point in the next three or four months as we, if, if the idea moves forward. Um, someone's going to say, how come you're doing a sunset for the rentals and you're not doing it for this? So I think it's a good, we should have an answer to it. It, it could be that Jamie's absolutely correct that there's something in the state law that would prohibit us from, from putting a sunset provision in here, but I think we should know that. And if the question comes up, we can answer it. So regardless of how it goes forward, I think that question is, I would certainly like the answer to it. And I think Kathy said she would be more than happy to talk to council. I think we should get the answer and just have it in our frequently asked questions list if we need to have, if we need to have the answer to it, we have it. The question's been asked and we answered it.
Yeah, I think I definitely agree. Um, if anyone else has comments, Brad or Will, on that. Um, but I, I do think that it is important to have it laid out as to what what would generate the building commissioner from not issuing a permit? Is it based upon zoning violations or how many times? Is it one time? What constitutes him denying a renewal?
Right, good point.
And, um, so, and then laying out that plan. So we have that scenario drawn out. Um, for the appeal process and all of that good stuff, knowing what the road is ahead for any of the, any business that violates it in the future and, or takes advantage of it and then violates it. Um, and then we would know how challenging it is, um, to reverse the zoning if it is too strict, or we can have a little bit more input on that process, I think would be beneficial. Yes, Susan?
That's actually an excellent point. Um, because one of my neighbors said, uh, who I guess had some familiarity with motels years ago with kids climbing over fences to get into pools and stuff like that. She said, what if the police are called five times to one location? Wouldn't, would that be the kind of thing that would automatically put someone on the unqualified list or? So that's a good question. If not necessarily violation of the zoning, the, the, the written word of the zoning, but calls to the police or, I don't know, unsafe conditions. You brought up a point, uh, I think two weeks ago about having kids maybe in unsafe conditions or unsafe conditions are created by overcrowding. So it doesn't necessarily have to be to get, to get, to get not permitted. It doesn't necessarily have to be a violation of the zoning. It could be, we could say, look, if the police are called to some location five times, that is indication enough, they should not be allowed to participate in the program. Um, and I think the, I think that the motel community would agree with that. They don't want this kind of bad publicity associated with, with, you know, their attempts to try to house their employees. So those questions, I think, are excellent questions and, and good concepts to focus on. What would constitute something that would force a motel or force Mark to say, I'm not going to renew your permit? Um,
Brad, did you have something? Yes.
I just think we're going too far down the rabbit hole. We're a planning board.
Yeah.
I think, um, when I do sales presentations all year long, I know right now I'm selling for the fourth quarter. So I am planning in advance. What Jamie said makes perfect sense for the next chairman of the planning board. Hopefully he'll be one of the people here. You put it on the docket on October 95th, we're going to make sure that we have Chief Frederickson, uh, some motel owners, Mary in the chamber, and we send out an invitation two months in advance and we get feedback. I really don't think we need to go down to if they're called five times, because the most powerful thing that happens in town meeting is, uh, Chief Simogian or Chief Frederickson stands up in full uniform and gets on a mic and says, this bylaw sucks. I bet the town is going to stop it right there. And I have never seen the town go against a chief and a chief. So I think we should get this on the docket in front of the selectmen. I think the way it is right now is just fine. And then we have another meeting in October and we review it. And if it really doesn't make sense, we yank it. I, I think you're getting too deep in the weeds here. We're not the Board of Health. We're, we're, we're simply trying to get something to the selectmen, have the selectmen say, this makes sense, bring it to the voters.
Thank you, Brad. Susan, did you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to, Brad, I'm not suggesting that we add language. I'm thinking of the presentation. I'm thinking of the public forums that we're going to be engaging. We should be able to answer some of these questions. Um, because people are going to ask them. I'm not recommending now at any point that we change anything. Um, because we, but I'm thinking as we mock up this idea, people are going to ask these questions. What would, okay, you're going to permit this stuff. By the way, what would, what would give, why would Mark not permit something? That, that is a question I think that's a normal question that we ask. I'm not suggesting we put language in here now that would address that. But we need to be able to answer that question. So that's all, that's all I'm suggesting, Brad, is that as the people who are going to be pushing this idea forward, we need to be prepared to answer these questions. That's what we're supposed to be doing. Um, and, and I agree, it, the language right now is, is probably fine. Um, but we're not the citizens sitting, you know, up on, you know, the rest of West Road listening to this. They may have questions that we need to be able to answer. That's all I'm saying. Uh, and I hate hypotheticals, and some of these are not going to be hypotheticals. But Liz is right. We need to, we need to sort of expand the conversation so that as we work through it, we have the answers to some of these, what I think are going to be fairly practical questions. That's all I'm saying. I'm not advocating any amendments right now, any changes to language. I think Kathy needs to talk to the council. He'll answer some questions and, and we'll take it from there.
I think, um, yeah, I think there's benefit to having, um, staff just be prepared in advance. So when zoning is passed, they already know what they can, what they can't, the process, everything, and then enforcement. Um, so they know the demands that are going to be potentially placed on them. Um, not just once, but maybe possibly multiple times. And then what's the reaction? So, um, so everything that is done consistently, I think is really important. And I think that is part of the planning board's, this, um, role is actually seeing, um, what the impacts, not just on the community, but also on the staff for enforcing something that we don't want on the books just to be on the books. You know, watering, it, put, keeping a place for your horse to have water is it's not really that, it's not really beneficial right now. So we need to make sure it's beneficial to our community, whatever we're going to be passing. So, um, okay, so, uh, we're good to go. Kathy, can you just do a little bit more legwork as far as that sunset clause and doing that homework? And we will bring it back for, um, just an update. It's not going to be, I, I don't think there needs to be any like ma- major. I think we're all in agreeance that this is, has the, um, there is importance to placing this on a public hearing, um, for consideration in March. So I just think we need, uh, just a simple update would be good. All right. Thank you, everyone, on that one. Um, the next item on the agenda for discussion of potential zoning amendments. Um, number one B is short-term rentals. Kathy, can you provide a update on that, please?
Sure. In your packets, you'll see that I've kind of tried to, um, develop a little bit further, uh, a small section on short-term rentals, which identifies a purpose um, to provide for the orderly operation of short-term rentals for residential properties that balance private neighborhood and public interests. And we're really trying to protect and promote the residential character of existing neighborhoods, protect, uh, public health and safety, uh, enable residents to better afford to live here, maintain their properties and contribute to the community, and also to ensure that they continue revenues to the town from the short-term uh, rental excise tax. Uh, it modified applicability, uh, into the definition for short-term rentals, which we had looked at previously. Um, one small minor edit to registrations and inspections, just to indicate that the, uh, local contact information uh, shall be located someplace where it can be viewed from the exterior of the home. And then just some minor edits to the sunset clause. Um, getting rid of some of that language that Susan mentioned, and then also being a little bit clearer, like you mentioned, Liz, with regard to the 11:59 PM versus midnight, so we know what day we're talking about. Uh, and then you'll also see on the use table, um, we put in a separate use regulation of A13 short-term rentals, um, which is allowing it in the residential zones. Uh, it's basically allowing it everywhere except for not in the B3, because we don't allow residential in B3. And not in the med- registered marijuana overlay district, which is also basically in the B3. Um, and not in the adult entertainment district. Um, but I also, um, put it as no in the HMOD 1, 2, and the village centers overlay district. The reason I did that is because that's an optional overlay district. Um, and really what we're trying to do with those overlay districts is something different than having short-term rentals. Um, so that's only if someone chooses to develop under those particular overlay districts. If they have a regular house there and they've been renting it in the B2 zoning district, they can continue to do so, uh, under the underlying zoning, which is, um, the B2 district. That's about it.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, comment from the board, Brad?
I was just going through the, the VCOD and I can see any HMOD, I get it. I just, so if something was created using one of those platforms, then they'd be barred from short-term rentals. Got it. I thought so, but I was just very clever. I wouldn't have thought of that. Um, two points. And yes, adult entertainment centers in the B three as well. Um, district, adult entertainment district. But well done. Thank you. I just, the only thing is if I was renting to somebody, I don't know if I'd want my name and cell phone on the front of the house, but I can't see another way around it. Ah, that's, I don't know. But that's something that may come up at town meeting. I don't know how many people want to put their uh, their cell phone and their address and their name on the outside of a house where anybody walking by can see it, but whatever.
You'd have to be, it would, could be something that's close to the door, so you'd have to be going up to it. Doesn't like that posted like on a
No, I
right?
I was thinking if I had to do it, I'd, I'd hopefully put it behind the screen door, you know, where the bottom is already, you know, not the, not, it's a piece of metal, you know, so then he or she would have to do it, but that's, that's the only thing. But yeah, it makes, you did a good job for a tough, a tough bylaw.
Yeah. Susan?
Kathy, does this bring us in line with the rest of the towns on the Cape? Are we now like in, with everyone else with the short-term rental definition in our zoning bylaws?
I sent out a little inquiry before we started this kind of who is doing some things. And I think I did hear back from some people. I think Orleans is looking at trying to do something. I'm not exactly sure how far they've gotten. Um, Dennis was kind of um they really felt that it might be considered uh, accessory use and is customary in their community. So they were working with their town council and building commissioner uh, with regard to that. So not everyone is attacking it. I'm not sure whether Barnstable has taken it back up. Yeah, I know that they were hoping to do it um, at the beginning of the year. Um, but not everybody's taking uh, it right to heart and, and moving forward with it. My concern is that if we don't, because of the way things are in our particular bylaw, how our town council and how our building commissioner are viewing it, we may have some problems with some.
So we could be a leader in some regards.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be nice. Yeah, and I agree with Brad. Um, where it can be viewed from the exterior part of the home, prominent place to me means it's going to be viewed. Um, I don't, I, I think that language is a little perfluous. I would, I would, I think Brad's right. He means it's viewable. It's prominent, you can give access to it. I don't think we need where it can be viewed from the exterior of the home. That's my personal comment. I just, I think prominent to me means it's prominent. You can see it.
Okay.
If you're looking for it, you can find it or you can see it. So
Like a retail sign type of thing?
Well, I just
Like a lawn sign?
If, if it's, if it's prominent, I think it's viewable. I just don't think we, I don't thi- I think that language adds anything. And I think Brad's right. It creates a lot of privacy problems. But that's, you know, my person, I prominent to me means you got to be able to see it. If you're all looking, if, if one of the police policemen, they'll know where to look. Prominent means you've got to have it ex- accessible so that people can see it. Having it viewed from the exterior of the home to me means it is permanent. I think it's redundant to have that phrase, but anyway, that's my own.
That's actually Susan Riz's a good point. How about just inside the door? Police are going to come in. And if something's inside the door, like a liquor store, all the licenses are inside the building as soon as you come in. So any law enforcement or any um, alcohol, tobacco and firearms official can see exactly what the uh, who owns what, where. Would, would that work if you put the information behind a screwed down opaque plaque?
Kathy, can I ask you a question? This isn't just for police though, correct? This would be if somebody needs to call their neighbor because they have unruly or somebody in the vicinity that has unruly tenants that they can get access to the person rather than calling the cops and having the police in it. Maybe there, I mean, there are some people that still want to have a face-to-face rather than going through the police to tattle on their neighbors.
I would think the vast majority of someone's really uncomfortable is probably something that's happening later at night. And it's probably best if the police are the ones to handle it, in my personal opinion. Um, I think that, that I just noticed it's chapter sixty-four G, I believe, allows you to post the local contact information and cell phone on your town website. Because this is just saying you, we're allowing these in our community. And if we're allowing these in our community, you need to be responsible for it. And if you're responsible for it, you need to have a local contact and name that we can call if we're having difficulties. So um, it's, it's not, I mean, this is just something that was kind of already in the uh, Board of Health regulations that is supposed to be prominent, so that people again, it's usually the police going and indicating there's a, there's an issue. Um, but we have the right to post it on our town website. It's, it's just going to be a function of how the how we compile that list. So we definitely want to be sure that it's always, always going to be prominently displayed uh, at the property itself with the police. But then if we can get some type of um rental on our website, that might be another way of dealing with it. Then the police will always have access.
Thank you. Susan, did you have any other comments?
No, otherwise I think it's fine. I think it's something we should do. Uh, it's very helpful for Mac, but I would like to reiterate a point that we made when, when we discussed this a month ago. I really think as we move forward with this, we somehow memorialize the board's support of extra staff for at least Mark, uh, so that he can enforce the new rules and regulations. Um, you know, the, the, this is a well-intended, but it won't work unless it can be enforced. And I don't know how we, wh- whether we've form, send a letter to the selectman urging additional staff or something like that. But how do we as a board memorialize our support for additional staff so that Mark and Bruce can really enforce not only this, but, but the potential seasonal housing situation? Um, I think it's important, they haven't had any staffing increase. Their staff has been frozen since two thousand and eight. Um, if we really do want this to work, if we want the seasonal thing to work, uh, we have to give the citizens the confidence that there is a support staff to make it work. Uh, and I get, that's a, that's an issue for another time, but I, I do think we got to think about it as we push it forward. How do we, how do we as a board memorialize our support for additional staffing? If we're going to recommend these, these zoning changes? Um, because
Yeah.
that it, Mark said it, um, Kathy's over, I mean, there's just, it's not just those two, it's everyone in town hall, but these two in particular. That's just a thought for another time, though.
If I may?
Yes.
Um, I, I do think that in the typically, there's a cover memo that we send um, to the Board of Selectmen outlining the changes and then, you know, the results of the public hearing. I think that might be a good opportunity to in- include that recommendation in that uh, memo to the board's selectmen with the, with the actual zoning amendments.
I think another option is, is to um, just as Brad had referenced at the last um, article review, that in the fall, in October, we actually bring both topics back onto the agenda for review and see what the impacts are. And then um, take recommendation from the building commissioner for support to the selectmen when the budget is being prepared, that, that is something that if they want this um, item to remain on the books, that this is what it's going to take in order to efficiently um, enforce it and maintain it and sustain it. So um, that's another option that we can explore, or at least in the cover memo and the presentation, Kathy, we are going to be presenting this as well to the selectmen prior to it being officially recommended before the warrant is printed. So that is another thing that we can mention is that these two items are going to be coming back to us for review. And that they should in the future be anticipating some, any types of um, demands or increase of demands on staffing, you know, this may affect it and they have to be prepared for that um, to remedy it. Good point. So, um, Will, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, hi, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question for Kathy. Um, on page two, four eighteen point five point three, about duration. Um, I guess my question is, how enforceable is that? And is it, and where, what's the history behind having that piece in there? Because I know some summer camp counselors that would violate this. You know, if it's their day off or night off, um, they might not or can't rent something longer. And I'm not asking because it benefits me. I'm asking because I just don't know if it's practical.
I, I think the point is, is that you have to rent it to one person for twenty-four hours. If that person uses it for six hours, that's their business. They just don't want people
Okay. Sorry, I was looking at it liter- I was looking at it more, okay, I got it now. Thank you. Um, I also support this, uh, now that I understand it better. Um, uh, and I'm glad that it's
So in theory, you can't rent by the hour. You can rent by twenty-four hours.
Okay, when I saw that, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That makes more, way more sense.
You don't want to cause a whole nother problem.
No, thank you for straightening me out. Okay. Um, so no, Madam Chair, I support this and I'm glad um, that it's moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Joanne, I'm not leaving you out. So would you, do you have any comments on this?
I know.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Jack or Mary, if anybody from the public would to um, comment on any of the new changes to draft number three of January fourteenth. Um, I don't know if Tom, your hand is up.
It's new.
Is it new? Okay, yeah. Um, if you have any comments, um, we'd love to hear them.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, again, you folks are doing a great job. This is something that's very vital for our community. And as you know, uh, the way we transpond information today is, is really drastically changed. Uh, you go up to Indian, Indian Memorial and you look at the plaque and you actually got a QR code, right? So why does the information have to be in a plaque outside where we can maybe make it a QR code? Right? And then are all this information on the side of someone's building is being evident and, and imposing to, to someone to read? I mean, this is, uh, restaurants are doing it. Uh, like I said, we have a wonderful Indian Memorial down there with a QR code. People scan it and it gives you all the information. So I think this could be an easy fix. And yet it's still, uh, give the information that people are looking for to rectify whatever problem happens and hopefully there isn't a problem, right? So I, I think that's a, it's a good thing. I think Brad gave me that idea, but it just came out of my sleep. So thank you. Have a good night.
That's a great idea. I know that in um, other communities, they actually issue a um, some type of window sticker that could have that information with the QR code that would lead to the website. So it is a standard that the town issues along with the um, the short-term rental certificate. So that is something that, yes, it causes, it creates a little bit of an expenditure on a department. But at the same, and there is a standard that everybody can look at and see, and it's posted in the screen. There's no personal information, but it's posted on the gl- you know, the front glass door or the front window. And it's inside, so there is no manipulation with the QR code either, which it is coming down um, in the news lately that there has been some manipulation with QR codes and um, and it's not going to the direct source or the accurate source for payment or any information. So I think that would be something that staff could look into and that's a great suggestion. Thank you. Um, Mary or Jack, anybody else that, from the public that had any comments on this? Don't see the hands. So I, um, is there any other board discussion before I close out and move on? Excellent, Kathy. Well done on that. I think that you can close the chapter on that one for us until um, public hearing um, time. And I don't know, is just a clarification, do you need us to vote in February to move it to a public hearing? Is that something that we're going to anticipate in February?
Uh, we've never done something as formal as a vote. It's just a case of, you know, lots of its time is, is advertising. Now that the register uh, is out of business, we have to do it in the Cape Cod times anyway, which gives us um, a little bit more flexibility. Actually, it took a good thirty days to get something into the, into the register by the time you had to submit it. Because we're on a Wednesday and they published on a Thursday. Um, so we might have a little bit an easier time publishing, but no, it's just kind of like when you guys are comfortable um, advertising it. And we think you've done everything so that we can clearly uh, identify in the public hearing notice what we're proposing.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving forward on to meeting minutes. Uh, we have one, I believe, one set of minutes, December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. In your packets. I don't know if you've had a chance to review. If you are comfortable, I'll take a motion.
So move. I would love to second that, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. This is a call vote. With Brad first and Will as second. Um, roll call. Brad Goodwin.
Agreed.
Susan Brenna.
Agreed.
Will Rubenstein.
Yes.
Joanne Crowley.
Yes.
And Liz Hartsgrove. That is yes unanimous. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is Board of Appeals Agenda and Decisions. Kathy, you sent us a variation of them, several, I think or three that we saw just recently. Um.
Yeah, the, the one, the one that got sent out today was related to the urologies association with the parcel that we rezoned. It does sound as though that rezoning did help um, them with that decision and, and they did get um, their approval, but with some, some um, fairly reasonable conditions, I thought.
Yeah, I agree. I thought the uh, timing Monday through Friday and ending at five or four-thirty was good with as well as lighting. Um, and things like that was very good. So, and the parking component of it, they took, um, they listened and they incorporated that into it. So that was very good. And that was one of our concerns um, when we had the discussion before it went to town meeting, so.
Also, Madam Chair, I, I just wanted to say that I was really pleased to see the Ryan Family Amusement um, approval as well. I think it's a really good thing for the town. And what's nice is it's an expansion into literally an adjacent building and it doesn't require too much fuss. But ultimately, I think it's a really nice yield. So
And anytime you can throw an axe and get a drink, I think just, I am all in, folks. Tell you. Whew.
Wowzers.
I know what I'm doing on my sixty-first birthday. Honey, let's go.
You don't need all your limbs, Brad.
No, and, but bring my mother-in-law. No, I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding.
Susan, yes, go ahead.
I also just want to shout out, I think it's probably led by Dick Martin, who's a big tree person. Uh, them requiring that some trees be planted, uh, not only in the parking lot, but down along twenty-eight. Um, keep going at it. It will ultimately, I, I'm disappointed they're only three inches, but they're trees nonetheless. So that's a, that's a big step forward.
Yes, and uh, they're really just been a wonderful asset to our community. So I'm glad that the Z B A supported them in beautifying. They're, they're going to do a, an amazing job and they're continuing at it. So, and it's a family-friendly uh, business. And they are local. They support all of our businesses here in the community. They're really invested um, in the mid-Cape area. So I am very pleased to see that there was really minimal conditions placed on them and, um, and just let them you know, do what they do best. So, so thank you. Um, committee updates from board members. Uh, Will, did you have any updates?
No, I do not. I know.
Budget, nothing?
Well, we're still, we have not yet had our meeting about the uh, about the schools, as indicated in our previous set of minutes. Um, I promised to give you an update when I have one, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And Susan?
Three quick ones. Uh, Drive-In Site, we met last week. Um, moving forward continually with course with the Conservation Commission, reviewing design, getting suggestions from them. Uh, right now, we're, we're pretty much, you know, uh, joined at the hip and the shoulder. Everyone has agreed on the concept. We might have a few glitches when it comes to some height issues. But by and large, moving forward uh, very cooperatively, good working relationship and making progress. Um, but once again, it's going to cost money. If we want it to be what we want it to be, it is going to cost money. Uh, because it, just because of course it's more expensive now, but some of the design enhancements, the design, uh, the new design types that we can consider now. Uh, we're looking at them in terms of lifecycle costing, which is going to cost a little bit more upfront, but long-term maintenance will be, will be abated. So um, not a problem at this point, just, that's just information. Property Disposal met last week, uh, very short meeting, the Property disposal met last week, uh, very short meeting, the decision was not to make any recommendations or, um, or referrals because they want to wait and see, quite frankly, what's going to happen on Route twenty-eight and whether we can use some of these properties, uh, ultimately on Route twenty-eight. So the decision at last week was, let, we had six on the list, the decision was remain silent on the sixth until we get a little more information and ideas about what's happening on twenty-eight. And then the last thing was, uh, and this is not really a committee thing, but the Housing Summit last week, last Tuesday night, very well attended, I thought. Again, a dedicated, interested, uh, you know, housing advocacy, people are really dedicated to their, to their, their craft. And, uh, Bach Forest gave some excellent comments, this is going to be the one of, apparently there's going to be another Zoom one soon for people that could not make it last week. And I think they're anticipating maybe at least one more. He wants to have two or three sort of, uh, sort of plenary sessions where people can get together and talk about this. One of his goals really is to educate the Board of Selectmen on the range of things that are out there and the problems, the pros and cons associated with each one. So that as the community discusses all this, they're not sitting there saying, tell us what you know, they're going to be able to fully participate in the conversation. So I thought it went well, I mean, Kathy was there, I thought it went well, it was a miserably cold night. But it started on time, um, it was good, it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Brad, did you have any, uh, committee updates?
Uh, first, an apology for missing the summit, um, but I stayed home until Brian got his negative test for COVID. So, um, that was good, so I apologize, I missed that. Affordable Housing Trust is, um, really looking at our dollars. We had a meeting, uh, yesterday and we are starting to hope that, it just goes right off what Susan says, we're trying to hope that some land comes available that we can use to put out an RFP, to have a builder come in and build some affordable structures. Then maybe going with the higher demands, well, bad word, higher requests by, um, other people who want X amount of dollars before they'll start the process. So Tracy Post said it best, she was like, a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand dollars per unit is a lot more money than it used to be. Um, and so since we only have limited funds, we're starting to see how the best to use those funds going forward, so, um, it's, it's dicey, it's tough to own a home right now and, um, that's what it is, it all comes down to land. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Joanne, did you have any committee updates?
I'll brief at the next meeting.
Thank you. Um, and none from me, and I believe Susan just gave a wonderful board memo item on the Affordable Housing Summit. Kathy, can you provide us some detail on when the, um, the remote meetings will be for that, if it has been set already?
It has been set, Mary Wagon has set it for February third at two PM. And she hasn't started her big publicity blast yet, but I'm sure she, she will be doing so soon. It'll, it'll have the same format as the in-person one, uh, and similar to the way we did our workshops with the breakout groups, so it should be good.
Will that meeting be recorded and available on the town's website if people cannot make the two PM meeting?
I think it will, but the question is, is when you go to the breakout groups, you can't record the breakout groups. So, um, the presentation, I believe that the actual meeting on, um, the last meeting was actually recorded and you might actually be available, um, right now. You won't see necessarily everything and it's really hard because you, it's such a workshop-intensive, small group setting. But I did want to give Susan a shout out, she, she did a great job presenting her table and did actually get, uh, applause for her, her presentation, the ideas, which would really be.
You know, the ideas were renegade ideas. People did appreciate the ideas that there's, there's more to housing than just a front door.
I think visioning kind of came, it really helped with all of that is, and we see that nothing's a silo. It's all interconnected and it all has to be looked at together, very good.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Correspondence, we did receive some, um, the conservation updates and things like that. Kathy, was there any other correspondence that we needed to be aware of?
I don't think there's anything significant, I think the most interesting thing was probably the ZBA decisions that had been sent out recently.
Agreed. Kathy, for staff updates?
I was going to talk about the summit, that, um, but there's not, I don't really have a significant amount of things to update. We are working, uh, the rack, Joanne, uh, will be meeting on Monday and they're going to start looking at, um, the notice of project change for the comprehensive wastewater permit, so that's a big, big next step. So that, that'll be exciting to kind of help move that forward as well as staff starting to look at all of the different components for the, the state revolving fund loan process and what that application would entail to make sure that we have all of those ducks in a row as we move forward.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, we have two in February, uh, scheduled on the second as well as the nineteenth. And I believe that is it for our meeting agenda for tonight, yes, Susan?
Can I just ask one question?
Of course.
On the DRI issue.
Oh, that was.
Yeah, we, we didn't do well on the final vote. Is it, would it be beneficial, and now because of zoning, should we, um, as a board write a letter to zoning and incorporate and attach with the letter all of the documents we as a board signed that went to the Cape Cod Commission, um, to let them know how passionately we felt about the issue? If they know about it, that's fine. I just, I just would like to sort of make sure that they know how hard we worked to do the right thing and nothing happened. I, I'd like them to see the letters that were written, which I thought were excellent letters. The fact that Joanne and Brad went to several of the meetings, Kathy was there. So not only did we write, but we showed up in person. Now the ball's in your court, but here's what we did. I, I just want to make sure they know everything we did to try to, to, you know, make the best of a bad situation.
Great, yes, Kathy.
I, I think we, we should wait until the application's been submitted and make sure, I don't know whether they're going to do any changes whatsoever. Uh, I believe they do need to do another balloon test because our bylaw requires that, so that the zoning Board of Appeals members can go out and take a look at that. But we can certainly, and have done so in the past, where the planning board has written a letter to the zoning Board of Appeals, letting us know, letting them know our thoughts, so we can certainly do that.
I think there is value to that, Susan, um, at least demonstrating the timeline of our participation and our commitment to what we really, um, all strongly believe on. But I will leave that to Madam Chair when she, um, when the time comes. And, um, I definitely put my trust in her on crafting the letter or whatever is necessary to make sure that our voices are heard, as well as Brad's, who, um, you know, he has very valid points as far as the communication component of it. It is something that we don't want to hinder or step in, in the way. But there are some other aspects that are important, equally important for the longevity and the, the aesthetics of our, our whole planning process and efforts on twenty-eight. And the middle ground should be met, um, so, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about board composition? I was just wondering if there's any update or if anybody has expressed interest from the public in joining the planning board? Just to help our, to help our quorum and attendance and also just the general board organization.
Great question, Will. Kathy, can you give us an update on, um, the appointments chair's efforts to help us fill our vacancy?
Which is Peter Smith is, is the appointments chair, and I did relay, I actually have, um, I actually have a couple vacancies on, on various boards. So I have been corresponding with him recently, uh, and indicating that he was going, they did advertise for it. We do have, um, a talent, a talent bank forum from Jim Saban, who's interested in participating on the planning board. Uh, I don't know whether there's been other people and where that stands, but, um.
Jim Saban coming back.
Yeah, right.
He started, he started on the planning board and then he went on to the selectmen.
Yes, you guys are a nice training ground for Board of Selectmen, I think, there's a lot of, uh, of that going on. But I did talk to him about, you know, typically that one, a planning board member, usually the chair sits in on the interviews and that, and I do as well, and I'd be happy to do so. And he was interested in that and I haven't heard back about anything being set up.
Thank you. That is, um, positive news that we have interest and of somebody of, um, all of, you know, with the, those resources and experience, that's really vital for bringing, um, depth to our board, so, thank you. With that, I will take a motion for adjournment if there's nothing else. Nope, no other matters, okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, second, please.
Excellent. Roll call vote. Start with Joanne Crowley.
Yes.
Susan Brenna. Susan, you're muted?
There we go, there.
Excellent, Will, Will Rubenstein?
Yes, please.
Uh, Goodwin?
Hi.
And I for Liz Hartsgrove, thank you, meeting is adjourned, well done, everyone.
Thank you.
Well done, Liz, good job.
Enjoy your dinner, everyone, I will see you on the second.
Bye.
Bye.
Roundhouse day, I can't wait, okay?
That's right.
Bye.
Bye.